It's five o'clock on October 26th. This is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to review and learn about and ask questions about the Parks and Rec and Open Space Master Plan. I'll welcome the consultants in a moment who we worked with on this project. Dan Biggs and Rochelle McKnight from Weston and Sampson. Before we did that, I also wanted to thank members of the community, some of whom are on this call, who were part of the steering committee that really helped to shepherd this process. From Parks and Rec, Dave Bush and Jerry Wetchen. And from Open Space, Susan Messino and Marjorie Winters. Also, I want to thank and recognize staff who put a ton of time into this. Tom Tbersky, Orlando Cassiano, Mike Liddon, and Maria Capriola in particular for shepherding this process from a staff standpoint. So without any, actually, before I officially turn it over to you, I just wanted to give a little bit of context. What the intent of this master plan is going to do is it's going to be, help us be smarter and more strategic in how we allocate our financial resources. So we are able to look holistically at our open space, at our parks facilities, at our strengths, at our weaknesses, our opportunities. And when we look at future budget years, we can ensure that we're budgeting and prioritizing strategically. So that's really the intent of this. So let me turn this over to Dan and Rochelle.
Thank you, Eric. Can everyone see my screen pretty well?
We can.
The weird thing about presenting is that I can't see you now that consumes my screen. So it's like talking to my laptop for a while. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for having us. Rochelle and I were talking earlier today. That's been a fantastic project. It's amazing how these eighteen months have gone by so fast, but we think we've covered a lot and hopefully we have a very usable document for the town to guide through the various open space and park and recreation interests of the town and really be there for you as a tool to move forward like we promised during the interview process. So as mentioned, we really thank the steering committee. This is, this is not work just by Weston Sampson, by town staff. This is by the collective knowledge and interests of everyone previously noted. It takes everyone's kind of vested interest and different interests to really make this a usable document, to be usable for all, to guide the town as they move forward. We also thank the members of the Cultural Parks Recreation Commission and the Open Space Committee. We had a couple of meetings with them for their inputs, which was, you know, very grateful for the interests that they have and a gift contribute to the various pieces of the master plan, as well as for the public. We had a lot of public engagement, which we'll cover here in a couple of minutes. But it takes, you know, the citizens to be interested and, you know, wanting to be a part of the equation. So we thank you for all the input as we have covered over the last eighteen months.
We won't be on your call.
Thank you, Dan. Real quick, if, if folks have questions along the way, is it okay if we just jump in? I know you can't see us.
Sure. We, yeah, we, yeah, just make sure you give a little chirp to me so I can pay attention to you with questions. We do have fifty minutes, so we're trying to make sure you stay within your timeframe, but happy to add questions as we go along. Rochelle and I are covering the topic.
All right, thanks.
Yep. So as we had promised, the project really followed a five-step process, starting with the kickoff now, July of 2019 or May-June of 2019, rolled into inventory and assessment, and we'll cover kind of a big overview of these different stages. We had various community engagement sessions, meeting on the bridge, in the public engagement sessions with stakeholders, meetings with staff, really collected holistically great input. And then we also had an online survey, which really was a viable tool to see those that couldn't attend our sessions, their perspectives. We then rolled into recommendations and the draft of the master plan and have come full forward now to our final presentation here in October to share with you the results of this long, decent process.
So I can introduce the contents of the master plan here, just by way of introduction. If anybody hasn't met me before, I was in and out and all over Simsbury for quite a while last summer, but I'm Rochelle McKnight, also landscape architect with Weston and Sampson. So the master plan itself is pretty complex, pretty involved, but it follows introduction to the master planning context, which Eric described a bit in his introduction. We go through a demographic profile of the town of Simsbury. We worked with a subconsultant to develop those materials through ESRI. We did an analysis of your parks and recreation trends. I'll talk a little bit more about that later as we get into some of our key issues, matrices and goals and recommendations. We did an extensive public engagement process, as Dan mentioned, throughout the course of this project. That's all included in the contents of the master plan. We did pop-up events. We went to a lot of your excellent cultural events, got to hang out, eat hamburgers, listen to music, and then we had formal public events and presentations as well. We did a separate organizational, marketing, and financial analysis with our subconsultants. We looked at your recreational programming over a period of time to understand what the strengths and weaknesses are and what some of the trends are emerging in your region. We did a facility inventory analysis. I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time in Simsbury, walking through most of the parks and open spaces, got to walk through them with some of the open space committee members and certainly with the Culture, Parks, and Recreation staff, which was an awesome opportunity. We put together a key issues matrix, which I will review at length to help you guys understand how we developed that process. And through all of these steps, we acquired and came forth with a series of recommendations that we had an opportunity to review with the town pretty extensively and with stakeholders to sort of vet our recommendations to make sure that they all made sense. Those recommendations then fold into a formalized goal and action plan for the town. And then in our appendices, we have a series of pretty basic but informative concept plans, open space mapping, recommendations for open space, and then we include a lot of the background research and public engagement that we did throughout the process. So the next couple of slides, we're just going to do a very broad sort of bird's eye view perspective of some of the contents of the master plan. So this is not meant to be a deep dive into demographics or some of the other issues that we covered, but really sort of a glance. And the document itself has a much more extensive investigation of some of these topics. But overall, the demographic profile of Simsbury, you all have really excellent bachelor's, grad school, education attainment throughout the town, which is pretty unique and extraordinary for the town. I think that because of that, there has been a great deal of public involvement and a lot of input and opinions about the way that the master plan should be developed, which is awesome for us. You have a pretty high median household income, a lot of white-collar jobs, and certainly the racial and ethnic profile of Simsbury at the moment tends to be predominantly white with Hispanic population and then Asian-American population trailing behind that. So that's just an overview of just a portion of the demographics of the town of Simsbury. Population statistics, this is definitely very important for the town to understand. It looks like you're going to have a .51% growth over time. That's projected out to 2035. Certainly in our public engagement sessions and a lot of the events that we had, we heard feedback that people felt like the town was growing really fast, and there was certainly concern about some of the open space getting gobbled up, maybe, you know, potentially housing developments going in that not everybody agreed with, and definitely a concern with overstressing the existing infrastructure and losing some of those wonderful open space amenities that you all have at the moment. So as you can see, the town of Simsbury is growing much faster than, you know, even Hartford County, certainly over Connecticut as a whole, and very much, much more so than the USA as a whole. So it's important to keep that in mind as you all look at open space protections and as you look at developing the parks for future recreation programming over time. Survey statistics, so this was really a cool process. You guys had over a thousand responses on your survey. Again, I don't know about you, but I know that in the time that I've worked with Weston and Sampson, I've never seen that many responses to a survey. So it was a pretty great number to see coming back. Ninety-two percent of the respondents were actually residents of Simsbury, and out of those, ninety-four percent own a home. And then if you look at this graph, you know, forty-two percent of those people that responded have been in Simsbury for over twenty years. So that's really a testament to how excellent the town is and how much people love living in Simsbury, how invested they are in the town. So interestingly, as we went through the stakeholder survey, there were some very strong, consistent responses in terms of priorities for the development of parks and recreational facilities. People really strongly desired a preservation of open space and natural areas. Certainly accommodations for passive recreation, walking, biking, running, were more heavily favored, at least in the survey, than other recreational activities. People consistently were looking for water-based recreational opportunities. You all have excellent aquatic resources around, but at the moment, not as many, you know, kayak launches, swimming opportunities, as people would like to see. And then the other thing that came up is, you know, people are looking for year-round recreational opportunities, so looking for an indoor venue that they might be able to visit, and certainly some of the amenities that just make it more pleasant to go into some of those parks and open spaces. People were looking for improved amenities. So a facility assessment overview. One thing that's very unique in Simsbury and that we heard across the board is that people were very grateful for the current maintenance of facilities. That really speaks to Parks Department staff, Orlando's team, just what an incredible job they're doing and how hard they work. People are very appreciative of that, and it really showed in your parks. We do a lot of these master plans. We do a lot of facility assessments, and I can say personally that I felt like Simsbury's parks were definitely some of the best that I've seen in overall maintenance and care. Definitely your facilities are designed for, at the moment, you know, wide variety of different age ranges, different uses, certainly a good mix of passive and active recreation, and places for cultural opportunities for people to come together, go to festivals, learn, to, to, to listen to music, and to congregate, which is really awesome. Very often, we see that there's a strong desire for that, but the towns don't have existing resources like amphitheaters or concert venues. So it's great that you guys have those. The parks are definitely heavily utilized. People love parks and open space in Simsbury. Definitely, there's a mix of how parks are utilized. Some of the parks, definitely, people are not spending as much time at as others, and I think that's just a reflection, not only of perhaps the facilities that are there, but how much people know about those various parks and where they are, whereas some others are, you know, central to town and people can see them. There are a lot of, there's a lot of programming happening at those parks. So there's a bit of a mix of utilization across the parks. Certainly scenic quality, it's a beautiful, beautiful region. And then Simsbury also boasts a very wide network, existing network of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So areas of improvement, I know that I, you know, raved about the, the quality of maintenance across the parks and not to diminish that at all. There are certainly different features like playgrounds and some different amenities that do need some maintenance upgrades, and that's really a function of there just being so much that needs to get done because you have such an extensive park system, but not everything can be addressed all at once. ADA accessibility, we see this across the board. Towns are always seeking to improve ADA accessibility, so we would definitely make recommendations to expand universal access at all of your facilities. Invasive species proliferation, this is a very unfortunate fact of life these days. There isn't anywhere I go that I don't see a lot of invasive species encroachment, but there is certainly a lot that can be done in terms of management practices and public education to try to curb some of the invasive species proliferation. Parking and lighting, there, there's pretty extensive parking available, but not all of those parking lots are wonderfully maintained necessarily, or they're not all paved. And then lighting, you know, people definitely expressed an interest to wanting to be able to use facilities later in the day or even at night, and not all of the facilities have the lighting that really promotes that. And while there is an excellent network of bike paths and pedestrian walkways, not all of those connects to all of the parks and not all of them connect between the parks. And so improvements can certainly be made so that people can get to some of the parks that aren't as heavily utilized, or, you know, to get to the center of town or residential areas to make it easier to have the option to bike and walk instead of always having to get into your car. So working through, you know, we took a, you know, a deep dive into the analysis, we did all of this public engagement, and, and then we wanted to sit down and think about how to develop recommendations for the master plan. And so we use what we call a key issues and recommendations matrix. And basically what we do, once we've gathered input from stakeholders, from the public, from staff, and from the various documents and research that we've compiled over the course of the assessment, we take all of that information and we come up with a list of needs. So we come up with places where we see gaps, where we see areas of improvement. And then what we do is we use that and we do a rating system to calculate per user group how high on the priority list it was for, say, stakeholders or staff, or was it something that our team internally felt was really important. We also use the public survey to do this rating system. So out of that, we come up with a total number, sort of a prioritization number that helps guide us to figuring out this is what should be rated higher on the list of recommendations, you know, than others. We develop those recommendations, and then we key those recommendations into a series of goals, which we will review next. And then we have things such as factors, so we sort of prioritize what does this meet? Does it meet the needs of the town? Is it meeting the needs of the community based on everything that we've learned? Is it meeting the needs of open space? There's ease of implementation. There are a lot of different things that we're looking at, and we're trying to key it all back into the recommendations so that you all can see it in one place and sort of start to understand this is why we have said that we think that this is the most important out of our recommendations, and we sort of have a backup for it. And then with that, we do have a general suggestion for timeline as to whether we see that should be a short-term, midterm, or long-term implementation priority.
May I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
This is Sean. So you commented that we have a, a, a high number of resources, right? Large number of playgrounds, over thirty percent of our town is open space. Any discussion in here awaiting to, and I want to word this, I want to word this carefully and correctly, like with playgrounds, do we have too many playgrounds per, per population? And if we're chasing around $300,000 playgrounds all the time, are we actually over-investing more than the community needs? Or do we have like the right, the right mix of facilities with our residential density?
So this is something that we explore in greater depth in the master plan itself, where we do an analysis of your population and then what types of facilities are generally recommendation per your population levels. And then the other thing we compare that to is what we saw on like the public survey. So we definitely got a lot of comments about how much people value playgrounds. And so this is a really good example, like if I were to go out and do a field assessment and I'm at a park, it doesn't look like it's heavily trafficked, there's an older playground, I don't see anybody there. My first assumption might be, oh, this isn't really heavily used, maybe they could take this out, right? But I'm only seeing it really at a snapshot in time. So that's why it's important for us to take my visual observation, compare it to all of the public input we're getting, because we did get a lot. I had, there was a couple, there were a couple situations where I found myself in that situation, but then we saw a lot of comments from parents saying, this is really the only place that I take my child to go to the playground and it's very important to me. But you certainly wouldn't want to take away an amenity, especially in a place where you maybe don't have as great of access to some of those more popular playgrounds, right? So that's why we're kind of trying to look at it from a demographic side, we're looking at it from a field assessment, and then we're also using those public, the public survey information.
Okay.
So I hope that answers your question. I don't know really off the top of my head, you know, if it's too many playgrounds or not. I know that we became more selective about which playgrounds we said to improve or move or potentially remove based on.
Yeah, and I appreciate, we would never want to take away someone's playground, right? But in the, in the scheme of a finite amount of resources, we do have to prioritize, right? So downtown, you know, I presume Rotary Park has the highest usage, I'm assuming.
Sure.
And, and maybe the one, you know, off of, you know, and Wheaton has the lowest use, I don't know. But that doesn't mean it's not valuable, but it just helps us, you know, identify how and when do we update stuff.
Absolutely. And so that, it doesn't just apply to playgrounds, it's really any facility.
Yeah.
Right? Do you need bathrooms over here?
Right.
Do you need a sports field over here? So each, each one of those things that we, we put through this type of analysis to, to come up with a recommendation.
So Sean, to that point, historically, there's usually been the idea that per so many acres and so much of a population would equate to a certain number of playgrounds for that population. You know, some of those metrics have kind of fallen wayside, that, that's not really the standard of practice now. So especially with the public engagement piece is really where, you know, we'll take a first pass of understanding perceived use or perceived desire, and then really truthing it in with the public engagement piece to make sure that there is, you know, a small playground may just has as much love as the gigantic playground that gets everybody in the community to use. So that's where we went back to really saying is, is useful, is our desire for this, and the public input really was critical to saying, looks like you have a good number, there isn't that screaming need by residents of, we need more playgrounds. So we've kind of balanced it too. And there's also notion that there's playgrounds that are not necessarily maintained, operated by the town. So either at a church or at a private or a school even, may not be in our survey, but all the facilities that are serving the public, so those metrics, historical metrics are not really used as much anymore because you're obviously not going to count every playground in the entire community.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. Again, I know there's no, there's no necessary magic to this. It's a, it's a lot of, a lot of work as you folks have put in, so appreciate the answer to the question. Thank you.
Yeah, there's certainly a lot of back and forth that goes on through this process. And then the other, one final thing to mention with that is that we also have to look at recreation trends, because as Dan was saying, that's sort of the, they used to do it, you have so many acres, you have so many people, right? You need this many playgrounds, but then they found over time, playgrounds is just an example, it's the same thing for sports fields, but they found over time that, you know, if it's not matching up to the trends, you end up with a bunch of, you know, tennis courts or whatever it may be, and no one's using them.
Right.
Right?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, so to start with some of these goals and recommendations, this is a pretty whittled-down list. Dan, correct me, do we have, was it twenty goals in all? I can't right recall, or is, am I thinking of goals and objectives? Regardless, we have, we have more than this. This is a, again, a snapshot of the overall, sort of a condensing of the goals that we have in the final plan. But, so one of our, one of our top goals, and these are listed, they may not be listed necessarily in order of, of priority, but, so the first thing is to improve organizational efficiencies, because when it really comes down to it, you can have all the facilities in the world, but if you don't have adequate maintenance staff or you don't have adequate programming staff, you can't really do much to maintain those facilities and keep them operating smoothly. So that's definitely before we talk at all about making improvements to the park system, we have to make sure that you've got the staff capabilities to maintain and make it all work. Enhancing and improving internal, external, and external communications is very important. We want to make sure that as you're developing programming, as you're developing these different parks, facilities, that people understand that they're out there and how to utilize them so that you're not doing all of this effort, making all of these changes, and then nobody knows how to access those resources. Continuing to improve programming and services, this is a big one. You know, you kind of have to come back and look at this year over year to understand how the trends are changing, to understand what it is that people are wanting, creating that constant dialogue with the community to try to serve the people, you know, who at the end of the day are the reason we're doing all of this. Continue to improve and enhance a multi-use trail system. I think that this is a big one really for any community at this point. You know, it's very important to get people out, make, make sure that people have opportunities to stay active at all age levels, that they have the opportunity to get around the parks and to get to the central hubs and residential areas in town without having to get into their cars. It's a huge thing that people desire. Maintain and improve facilities and amenities. So before building new facilities and amenities, we're trying to make sure that the resources are there to maintain what you already have. And we certainly saw that feedback throughout the public engagement process, you know, don't spend money until you fix what you've already got or, you know, improve what you already have. Developing individual park improvement master plans, certainly in the case of Simsbury Farms and Simsbury Meadows, those are huge facilities, they have, they offer a ton of programming. And so we can sort of look at it from a bigger perspective, but in some cases, it's going to be necessary to conduct more fine-grained feasibility studies, especially for the more expensive improvements that might be proposed. Maintain existing open spaces effectively and appropriately. That goes back to trails, invasive species, management, making sure that people have access to the open spaces but that are not potentially damaging sensitive environmental resources. So you want to make sure that people can engage with those spaces but also keep them preserved and protected. Expand open space opportunities and offerings. This is especially important as the town is growing. We've developed some mapping that Dan will talk about a little bit later that helps you understand where you might see some connectivity in terms of wildlife, certainly in just landscape connectivity, that's going to be very important to preserve it now as the population is expanding so that you don't lose it all, because it's much harder to get it back once it's gone than it is to plan for it and be getting it preserved and protected. And then to develop individual open space and forest stewardship management plans. You've got a wild amount of acreage out there, you want to make sure that you're doing what's best in terms of stewarding the landscape, protecting the landscape. This can go anywhere from how do you deal with fallen trees to mowing and maintenance schedules to preserve pollinator and bird habitat. We have a lot of really specific recommendations in the master plan that will help you prepare for that.
Excuse me, Rochelle, hi, it's Chris Peterson. Could you just go back one slide real quick? Point number four, this is personally from my own education. Our, our trail system, which I think most people by and large would consider the Route 10 corridor bike path, multi-use, are, are there more uses that other towns have that apply to their trail, that trail corridor than, than we have, or is ours meeting the definition of as much as it should, multi-use from activity standpoint or a capability standpoint? So I'll, I'll leave it there.
Are you talking about like, in terms of people, can people get on it with strollers and rollerblading?
Correct. Whatever the word, multi-use means, is more than just one. And so that could mean, is it ten? So if there are ten things, is it biking, rollerblading, strollering, running, you know, do we meet enough of the definition of what is conventionally considered a multi-use trail system? Or are we, or are we deficient in what we allow to, to, to enjoy or participate on that trail system? Just curious, the way it's designed.
Sure. Dan, I'll let you handle that since you're the multi-use trail expert.
So I would say that you meet the definition. One of the, or some of the factors that really kind of allow or disallow inherently for user types is the surface. So when you have an asphalt So when you have an asphalt paved trail or pathway, that inherently will encourage users, runners, bikers, uh, small wheeled users, whether it's from a stroller or from a scooter or roller blade. Once you get to a more coarse surface, that inherently is going to limit some of the user groups. But from talking about your multi-use pathway system, you do, you do see users that are interested in using your pathways and your trails. Um, they're, they're safe for them to use and they're interesting for them to use. So it would meet that criteria.
Okay.
In general. So, um, once you start getting to more specialized, uh, user types where, you know, say mountain running, hiking, you know, that you start getting to a different treadway type that then obviously discriminates to user groups. But you would not get a thin tired rider on a soft surface trail, because that's not conducive to a efficient or safe use. That inherently, uh, teases out some of the user groups. But from a multi-surface, uh, multi-purpose trail standpoint, you do, um, more or less meet that criteria and you have a good network.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we're going to run through the, a couple of sites, specific recommendations for some of your major park areas pretty quickly. But Rochelle, if you want to just tap on the, uh, high items that we kind of called out in our recommendations.
Yeah, I want to make sure we have time, more time for Q and A as well. So I'm just going to hit the high points on these. Um, Memorial Park is an excellent place. Um, it's a really huge park, it has an upper and lower level. Um, what we saw time and time again is that people are looking for improvements to the pool slash bathhouse slash, um, uh, sort of aquatic play area. So we have made a recommendation to install a splash pad. You don't have a splash pad, um, at the other facility. So this seems like a great location for that. Um, general site improvements, parking, ADA accessibility. Um, and then, uh, improving or replacing the skate park that you have in that facility, because people are using it at the moment. It's definitely not designed for a wide variety of users, and I think it would be a really popular amenity to have a, a good functional skate park. Curtis Park is another very large site. Um, there definitely needs to be improvements to parking and restroom areas, because it's very heavily utilized by these soccer clubs. The other thing that's possible at Curtis Park is a formalized river and stabilization of the shore. Right now, it's just a dirt road leading out to the river. Um, so it'd be great if you guys could have a formal kayak launch there. And then there's opportunities, because there's so much wetland buffer, um, and open space in this area to do a pollinator pathways program. And also to increase that riparian buffer by establishing more of a buffered landscape and tree riparian corridor.
Now, a question on, on Curtis. Can you just go back? This is Sean. With, with respect to what I think is Curtis E. there along the river? I mean, that essentially is unusable for a large portion of the year due to flooding.
Okay. That's really good to know.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but right, we have, we have substantial flooding down there annually?
Yeah, I mean, in the area that, that whole area field, yeah, it depends on the, it depends on the year, but yeah, it does flood. Um, this, this year of all years, though, we've seen a tremendous amount of, uh, use down there by the river.
Yeah.
Especially that boat launch area. The area where they, they have noted here, the under, underutilized lawn for pollinator pathway. That i- is basically existing now as overflow parking for the major soccer tournaments that are run there.
Right.
Uh, we, we mow it, we don't mow it regularly, it's mowed, I would say periodically. Um, but, but again, that's to, to give them the overflow parking. Um, and, and as we, we've seen, I've been here back three years and we've seen quite a bit of flooding. But again, it is, it's one of the few spots where we have, uh, river access in this town. I mean, we, there's always a, a heavy desire for more. But, um, of, of this year, there, there's been, since March, when people have been home, it's been almost a constant use down there. And I, I don't, and with the favorable weather we had this spring and summer, I don't think we closed the park very much at all. Orlando, I could be wrong, but maybe it was a day or two. Uh, but typically each spring and maybe a week in the fall, we lose, we lose a little bit of time.
Yeah, and that, that's only my only point. So again, back to the prioritization conversation, you know, as, as we pay for things. It, it, what can, what concerns me about this part is that we're, we're subject to, to natural forces, whereas, and I want to be very careful, do we abandon this soccer field but focus on boat launch? Because, you know, that's, that's a use that's not necessarily dependent upon permanent structure otherwise. And then focus on the other land acquisition or across the street for bathrooms, et cetera. You know, I, that's, I assume going to be part of the conversation, guys, is, you know, how we look at it. Because, uh, you know, in an ideal state, yeah, we have this beautiful field, um, but if it's down 25% of the time, it, does that drop it on the priority list?
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a good point. I mean, I, my, my feeling would be here, the priority is the, the parking, uh, on the opposite side of the road with, with, and or permanent restroom facility down there, or, or more, um, more adequate restroom facility, uh, down there. It doesn't necessarily have to be lights and, and heat, all that kind of thing.
Gotcha. Okay. Sorry for the sidebar, I just wanted to, to ask. Thank you.
No, it's all good.
So like correctly, Rochelle?
Um, moving over to Simsbury Farms, um, developing an intergenerational community center is a high priority here. This is one of the sites where we would recommend an additional feasibility study for the development of such a facility, just to understand what type of usership you might be able to have, the overall cost for developing such a thing. Um, there's this wonderful loop trail that goes around Simsbury Farms that could definitely be improved. It's great as it is, but the surfacing is kind of all across the board. And just to make it more user-friendly to a wider variety of age groups, I think it would be important to, um, to expand and develop that trail. This is another place where there's a lot of open space, a lot of open meadows, opportunities to expand the tree corridor, opportunities for pollinator pathways, and certainly meadow restoration. Uh, Wheaton Park is a park that at least in my field inventory seemed like it hadn't been as well utilized as some of the other parks. It's got an absolutely fantastic connection, potential connection to the Farmington Valley Trail. Um, I think improvements to the restroom facilities, improvements to the playground, some of these field amenities, and definitely the parking would make that Wheaton Park a more popular destination. Looking at Simsbury Meadows, where the, the primary thing that we heard about Simsbury Meadows is the issues that they're seeing with parking. Um, and so we do make a recommendation to look further in how to develop parking, to make it safer, to improve lighting in that area. Certainly looking permeable, uh, parking solutions, rain gardens to capture some of that stormwater, because you're very, very close to a wetland and doing any type of restoration, um, wetland restoration opportunities in this area that you possibly can do to sort of buffer some of those impacts would be recommended.
So we have all the recommendations and we thought it'd be useful for you all to see some of the, actually the plan's been implemented and Tom's been working through it already, uh, and really highlight what the next steps are for where this plan gets used. Um, so a couple of the, uh, high-level items, the first is to improve the ADA accessibility at all facilities. And since we've started this process, uh, Tom and the town engineer have been working on a feasibility study to look at the parking lot at Simsbury Meadows and also the parking lot at Curtis Park in an effort to improve ADA access. And that looks at the parking lot access as well as the surface conditions and how those could be improved for greater use. Um, the town is looking at, uh, or has approved funding to place two park entrance signs. So this, uh, would meet the objective 5.4, which is to improve signage to, uh, make, uh, access for patrons to find and use parks, open spaces and facilities better. Um, so improve signage and access within, uh, the town parks. And this would be likely to be completed by volunteers and scouts support, uh, to get this, these improvements, uh, in the ground. Our, one of our other objectives is to improve playground facilities. Uh, we understand the town has allocated $25,000 per year for maintenance replacements, um, with West Mountain Playground, uh, being one of the near future improvements to be had with $50,000 for replacement. Um, as well as in the future, Capital Plan 21, um, $150,000 for the Simsor Meadows, uh, playground improvements. So the town is already investing in the recommendations that we have brought forward. Uh, improve, replace park amenities. Uh, we hear that the ice rink is slated to get some mechanical renovations. Uh, and the town has already allocated funding for that, which is fantastic to keep, uh, existing facilities up and running and, um, moving forward. Our objective 7.2 was to acquire additional open space, and this is just an overarching, I thought we had. Uh, and it's great to hear that the town is working on acquiring the Meadowwood site, which is 138 acres. Uh, it would have a variety of uses and interests, um, from preserving the agricultural soils, um, to have continued farming for about 117 acres, we understand. Um, it has some historical resources of significance. Uh, Martin Luther King Jr. had once worked on this field for a period of time. Uh, so the state historic preservation office has interest in preserving some tobacco barns if possible, and having other spaces for the historical interpretation. Um, it has great connectivity to the Jason McLean game refuge spaces. So from overall conservation and open space, really connectivity, it's a fantastic location, kind of northern, central part of the town. Um, and then really has greater, um, opportunities for pathways and really using this open space and preserving the space for generations to come. Finally, uh, was planned is for six multi-purpose recreational fields. Uh, one section will be slated for that as well, so that meets some of the recreation needs of the town. But overall, you know, 117 or 103 acres rather, a site for the town is fantastic to see that this is moving forward. Uh, our objective 7.8, uh, we understand the open space committee has been moving forward with developing stewardship plans for Beldon Forest, Onion Mountain Park, Ethel Walk Woods and Strand Brook. Uh, this is really fantastic to hear, because we, throughout the process, I'd heard, uh, that there wasn't really guiding a plan necessarily in, uh, that was agreed upon or developed to guide these four locations. And it's likely just to be a great place to start with the management practices, really formalizing those procedures that have been worked on or improved for this town staff, and really just, uh, making these, uh, locations, um, managed for, preserved for generations to come. And with that, we also learned that the pollinator pathways program is taking off. Uh, with three locations at Simsbury Farms are implemented, one at the Hopbrook Landing, one at the Barn Door Hills Triangle, and one at the Meadow at Great Pond Laurel Lane. Um, so with the idea of having pollinator pathways, uh, really in the ground is fantastic. And having additional locations at Curtis Park, Simsor Meadows and Meadow at Case Circle under consideration that within a short period of time, having a, a good number of pollinator pathways throughout town is great progress, even before the plan is formally completed. So with that, I think we're at 42 minutes. Uh, we had 40 to 50 minutes, so we have, uh, a couple of minutes to spare for questions. But we really appreciate everyone's time and, you know, Tom and Maria, thank you for your time working with us. It's been a pleasure. Um, it took a little longer than we had hoped when we originally talked about this project. Uh, but with, uh, getting through COVID, it's, it's been enjoyable and really excited to see that the plan is, you know, finished now, but you've already made progress. So kudos to you all to really, you know, taking it seriously for the town. And, uh, we think it's a good template to move forward and we look forward to what can be in the future.
Thank you. Uh, for anyone watching tonight, there's a, uh, a link to the full report on the town website. Tom, what page on the town website can folks find that?
Um, it's a good question. It's supposed to be on the Culture Parks Direct page and on the Open Space Committee pages. I assume that's where, I'm not sure exactly where Tom Fitzgerald put it. I, I sent the link, uh, from what he sent me, but I believe that's where it might be.
Regardless, it's, it's on the town website and it goes through each of our, uh, our parks and, uh, open space parcels and has a, 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 a large number of recommendations, not shared here tonight, because there's just simply not time. Uh, but I wanted to open it up for questions for other board members to see if there was anything left in the remaining time we had.
I, I have a couple of general questions, kind of, they're kind of quick-hit questions, I think. Um, as, as far as Curtis Park, does Simsbury Soccer Club contribute to the facilities to keep it up and add value in certain places?
Yeah, that, that's a good question, Wendy. They do. Um, they, they, they've put a lot of equity into that park over the years. They, they built the pavilion. Uh, they pay for, pay for their, um, a lot of their, their hard equipment, like the goals. Uh, they help out with the annual maintenance, um, of grass seed, fertilizer, uh, that kind of thing. All, all of our sport groups do pay into an account. Um, it's a per, per participant user fee every year. It's 10, we're, we're currently collecting $10 per person for, per season, um, for kids under 18. Um, that's something we may want to look at in the future going forward. But, um, that helps with, that helps with the basic lining, uh, the lining equipment, the grass seed, that kind of thing. For the bigger projects, they've done fundraising, um, or they use their, their own reserves, again, to buy bigger equipment, the goals, the, put up the pavilion, that kind of thing. Um, so they've been, they've been a great partner, uh, with the town.
Yeah, just as I'm, I'm looking at it, we have residents who don't play soccer, don't care about soccer. What value do they get out of the park? If, if there's some other activity there for use, then like the river, you can kind of balance that out. Um, another question I-
Soccer club bought that land, right, Tom, originally and donated it to the town?
Who did?
I believe the soccer club paid for the lane in the first place and donated it to the town, if my memory serves me correctly.
Orlando might be able to say for sure. I wasn't here at that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sean, I think you're correct with that, Sean.
Yeah, yeah, Tommy Hurley and a bunch of folks, when they, they raised the money and, uh, when, when they were all younger and they, they developed it and gave it to the town, so.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear. And then, when, when, um, people were surveyed and we were going through all of this, was this during COVID? Was it pre-COVID?
Pre-COVID. So it was pre, Wendy, it was pre-COVID. We started in June, June of 19. Uh, the first event that they went to was the, um, that, uh, was the Baker Fair at the library. Then we went to Burgers on the Bridge. I believe we had another event, Rochelle, uh, the Fourth of July concert at the Meadow. What's that?
The Simsbury Duck Race.
The Duck Race, that's right. So those are, those are the four events we did. And we talked to a lot of people, uh, different age groups. Uh, we did the surveys over the summer. The timeline, we had hoped to start this earlier in the spring that year and get people before they were out of school. Um, the focus groups took place during the month of July of 19. The survey was fall of last year, uh, if you recall. Um, that was truly an online engagement and, and like they, they mentioned, it was, uh, quite popular. We sent it out through our database, I believe. The town set, put it on their website and also sent it out. Uh, we, we talked it up, um, it was on Facebook. It was, a thousand people is a lot of, is, is, is pretty good. I think we're all very happy with that number.
Well, well, the reason I was asking is because if it was pre-COVID, you know, people were just doing their normal thing then. And since COVID, it, it only emphasizes the need for the river access, the biking and the hiking, which it blew up, right?
Without a doubt. That's a great point. It's a great point.
So I just was thinking about that and I, I'll stop because somebody else might have a question.
Other question?
I want to hog the floor.
Wendy, go, go hog away.
I got two, two points, oh.
Oh, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
So, I, you know, so from a functional standpoint, um, Dan, Rochelle, how, i- it's two years, so it's two years down the road. We, some new philosophy comes along around one of the recommendations or policies or procedures that are in here. Something new comes along that would be contradictory to what is recommended or is an enhancement to what's recommended. Uh, how do we then insert from a process standpoint, understanding how this is the master plan? And maybe, maybe this is a question I need to point to Maria and Eric, but I'm thinking about my own business, my own strategic plan, I update every year. I think that last year's was the best thing and then the next year's comes along and it's a better one than last year's, because it's adopting and evolving. So how do we, how do we formally or informally go about, um, updating our master plan? If something proves to be a better idea or a change or shift in usage philosophy or whichever? Could you give some guidance around that? Is there a formal process that has to be go through?
I think that Maria and Eric can probably answer more the, the formal process of that. But to say, for the, the purpose of the master plan, we really do try, that's why we spend so much time on demographics and trends analysis. We try to take a look at things from a broad perspective and over the long term. And that definitely doesn't mean that there might not be something that comes up. Um, as Wendy was pointing out, with the introduction of COVID this year, a lot of things shifted in a really major way that no one could anticipate. And it's certainly true that, you know, if we see this virus sort of extend more of the long term than we'd like to, that there might be a shift in priorities. But I think that hopefully this document can really serve as a guide for you in terms of overarching priorities. And a lot of times what we try to get people to think about, is some of these goals and objectives, you might want to take the goal as your guiding principle and the objectives can kind of shift a little bit within that goal. Or you can frame it, you can have something that diverges a little bit, but as long as it stays within the overarching paradigm that you've all agreed to, um, there's an ability to move forward with that. When there's something that's like completely out of left field, that really takes you in a direction that you didn't think was possible and it creates a lot of conflict and static, you probably want to take a look at that. and it creates a lot of conflict and static, you probably want to take a look at that and make sure that it's worth the investment of energy. But overall, I think as long as there's open communication and partnership with all the stakeholders, that it's perfectly okay to adapt over time and you kind of have to, because you know, things are constantly changing.
So would you say, so this, this plan is, is there a, is there a shelf life to it? An ideal shelf life? Is it, is it a 10-year plan, is it good for 10 to 20, is it covered for 50? What's your set of your goals as far as your review? So what you, what you project for review periods?
It, it's usually 10 years as a health, you know, healthy, useful life of a plan. Some of it goes, comes down to how much Tom and team are able to implement. You know, so if he starts going through and he's already scratched off, you know, six objectives, you know, maybe he's done in two years and then it means you need to kind of re-strategize or reconfirm some of that you have, you mean the needs of the, the public. Sometimes it results in another, another public engagement process or outreach session to confirm that what is out for the 10 to 15 year lifespan of this plan really is valid. You know, demographic survey at that time would really confirm that's, you know, the same numbers were projected for 2035, that you're really on the same track. So I think it comes down to, you know, Tom using the tool. And then as he strikes, he starts seeing those objectives or goals that are less a priority than maybe originally thought and kind of adjusting as he kind of moves through the process.
Well, one last, if you guys allow me, one last question. Wendy touched upon it and it was in a couple of your improvements. I didn't really see it in the larger, the, the complete plan, but trash. So a couple of the things, for example, Curtis Park and Memorial Park, the respective sports clubs there pay for trash removal. We, a couple of years back, philosophically were faced with some dilemmas around trash usage or lack of the responsible use from our residents and trash in some of our public parks. We made a decision based upon our own impression and, and best judgment at the time to, to remove trash receptacles. We got feedback, we replaced some in the high use areas. But relative to trash in public places and public use places, recreational use, how are we, how do we look versus other towns that you have consulted into? What is their philosophy? What is your recommended philosophy around trash receptacles and, and responsibility on whose part?
So I have to say it covers the full gamut. There's from the carrying, carry out philosophy where there's no receptacles anywhere and everything is to be brought in and brought out. The other side of it's where very dedicated staff, that's all they're doing is trash pickup. And we have everything in between, almost to where you are on the spectrum of majority or a carrying, carry out with a couple of select locations of having, you know, high use with having receptacles. I think some comes down to is the capacity of town staff. The ability to maintain a safe and clean look facilities for users. And you know, it makes sense that some spots where you may have higher use do have receptacles and that seems appropriate. And if staff's able to maintain that, to keep that high quality of a facility going, that, that's where the interest should be to have those receptacles. Carrying, carry out policies at some of the other park facilities where we did not see issues, it seems like that totally makes sense. There's no need to introduce another receptacle to be picked up that's pretty far out where there isn't, I would say, an issue. But I think how we put in the master plan was you should continue to look at this policy. And if it needs to be, you know, reinforced, reduced or adjusted, that, that's kind of a, a moving policy adjustment. So that, you know, you, you make sure that you're providing a safe and clean facility for all users without overburdening staff if possible.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have to leave it there tonight. Really appreciate the questions and conversation and Dan and Rochelle, thanks for all your work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great.
Good everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, have a great night.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
One tiny bit of official business, is there a motion to adjourn from the special meeting? Second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Thanks so much, everybody.